I call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Adoption of agenda. Could I have a motion, please? If there are no changes, there are... Counselor Cutler. Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler that the agenda be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Regular minutes for May 27, 2024. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister that the regular meeting minutes of May 27, 2024 be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. I hereby open the public hearing on proposed municipal reserve disposal. Abe?
Yes, a public hearing for proposal of municipal reserve disposal. Our planner with ORSC, Katie Schlamp, is with us. And Katie, are you here?
Katie.
Hi, good evening. I am here. So, tonight, the disposal of municipal reserve was discussed at your April 22 council meeting. I'm under the understanding direction was given to move forward with the disposal of a portion of reserve land on lot R2, block 2, plan 741, 0893. The purpose of disposing of the reserve designation is to allow for the subdivision and sale of lands to an adjacent landowner. The area land to be subdivided and sold is approximately 0.017 acres, or 68.8 square meters. This is approximately five feet wide. The reason we need to remove the designation is only reserve can only be owned by a municipality or a school board and used for very specific uses. And so, to move forward with the subdivision and sale of land, the north... We do need to get rid of this designation, and then it would allow the town to move forward with moving the property line for lot 39, block 2, plan 061, 0901, to align with the northern lead property lines of the properties on Westland Spur. This will is required by section 671 of the Municipal Government Act, as well as 674 and 675. So, if council is happy with the representations made tonight and comfortable with removing the reserve designation, you can make a motion, which one has been provided in a later request for decision for you to make tonight. And then that will be sent to the register at land titles as a request to be to have that designation removed at the same time that the land, the subdivision is registered. So, it'll all happen at once, but the register would not allow the subdivision or transfer land without this motion. Any monies that you earn from the sale of these lands, because they are currently reserved, need to be treated the same way as any other monies you receive in the place of reserved land. So, if you were to subdivide out and someone did not have to dedicate land, but they had to pay money in lieu, those lands need to go into, or sorry, those funds need to go into a separate account. And so, that is the case here as well. And they are limited in the ways that you can spend that money. And so, that's section 671, two of the MGA requires that the funds are limited to being used for public parks, public recreation areas, school board purposes, and then to separate different land uses, so creating a buffer strip essentially. So, council has opportunity tonight to listen to any representations from the public. This was advertised both in the paper and directly to landowners in the immediate area, as well as with this type of disposal, there is a requirement to put a sign on the property. So, that has been on the property for two weeks now. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Does anyone want to speak to this in the audience? Questions, council? Hereby in our hearing, any opposition? I now close the public hearing. Next, delegation. The Station Association for Clerstom and Area Programming at Mackinac Hall. Abe?
Yeah, so we've got a request from... Got a request from station representatives to speak with council about services and programming in the town. Yeah.
I wish I had sections and numbers and all of that stuff. Can you hear me? Do I need to turn it off?
Yes, you have.
Question?
A little person?
Question? Is the gentleman in the yellow sweater recording this?
Yep.
It's live on YouTube anytime. Well, right now, it's live on YouTube. You'll be able to watch it anytime.
I request you turn off the recording. Continue.
I'm Dana Armstrup, and I'm the executive director of an agency called the Foothills Fetal Alcohol Society in, based in High River. And we provide services from Didsbury to pretty much Lethbridge. And I'm here with two other people who have been part of a journey of something we called the Station beginning just about 10 years ago now. I was thinking on the way as we were driving here about sitting with my grandkids and telling them bedtime stories, and I thought, this is going to be my bedtime story, and hopefully the questions that you ask as a result of that story, we'll be able to answer for you together. So, about 10 years ago, a bunch of us got together, there was probably eight of us at the beginning, to talk about what we could do better in the town of Clerstom, as far as meeting needs of the people, of the citizens here in Clerstom. And we all had people who needed services here. And we were all driving out and trying to find services in Tim Hortons, and services in libraries, and services in school gyms. And we put our heads together and fell in love with Mackinac Hall. The short story is that we became absolute lovers of the way that this town has supported their citizens to come to meet with those of us that provide services, from Orvella's Group, which is Inclusion Foothills, to the Health Unit, to my agency, to another one called Wild Rose Community Connections, to a group called Family Ties, and one called McMahon Family Services, and the Greater Family Resource Network. All of those services met a gap, and so, we did some needs assessments in Clerstom, and did some needs assessments in each of our own agencies, and decided that this would be the best use of time and money, and organized ourselves to be a little society, and worked together to come up with a logo that we were also proud of, and all of those kinds of things that you do when you're beginning and you're a grassroots organization who just loves what they do. Recently, we have decided that we no longer will be a society that supports this programming. And I guess our delegation tonight is to ask you if you would consider as a town to continue to support the activities for community organizations to use, the lovely Mackinac Hall, and continue to be able to meet citizens' needs in their own community, rather than to have them travel. So, that's basically the request. You have a letter in front of you with three impact statements, I think, signed by our president, who can't be here tonight, or our past president, I guess, named Kale. Yeah, there it is. So, basically, he's asking that, this is the big sentence, "Given that the town already maintains the operations of Mackinac Hall, we are requesting that the town reassumes management of the space, but allows the continued use of the site at no cost to community organizations." That's kind of the request, and I just wanted to give you the background of how much we've loved being here in the last 10 years, and how the decision to dissolve the society didn't come easily for us, but we feel like the community's ready to sort of take over what we've been doing for the last 10 years. Thank you.
Who would take over it?
Well, at the beginning, there was a commitment from FCSS. It's about a $2,000 commitment, if you paid, if you considered utilities and for us, insurance. I don't know what that would be for you, because it's one of your buildings, but I don't know who would take it over. I don't know who part, what part of your council would look at community programming. Probably FCSS would be something we worked in conjunction with FCSS closely through the whole time we've been here, and continue to. The family, Greater Family Resource Network, which is here with kids programming, is sent from a bigger government, Child and Family Services. I don't know whether they could contribute. What we're hoping is that you take over the management. Did I get it all, ladies?
Counselor Kettles.
Thanks for coming today. Can you explain maybe what's unique about that space that benefits this group? I mean, it is one of our older buildings, and it's pretty heavy, I think it's pretty heavy maintenance, at least moving forward. What's unique about that space that really, you know, benefits your groups?
The anonymity is nice, the fact that it's in a community center. Some of the people that come in, so when I was here, when I am here with the people that we have, we have people who are struggling with menthol and addictions that are coming for groups. They felt like when they came through that door, it was their own space, so there was a sense of ownership about that space. It is old and quaint and has a great lawn. And I know that Christine, who works with kids there, will tell you that they love just being in a space that they call their own. And when we came up with the name, the Station, it was kind of that. It was kind of like, you can park yourself here, because this is your building. This is beautiful, no doubt, but really, it was about a space that the community, citizens receiving services, could call their own. And it's big enough, Orvella says, yes, and it's big enough.
Thank you. Any other comments?
You're welcome. Thanks for having us here for the last 10 years. It's been a treasure. You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to action items. Bylaw 1781, Evolution Area Structure Plan Bylaw, first reading.
So, this is first reading of bylaw 1781, which is the bylaw to adopt the area structure plan for the Evolution Development Area on the south of town. And our planner with ORSC is still with us. Katie, can I hand this one off to you?
Absolutely. So, the Evolution Area Structure Plan has been presented by ISL and Evolution Land Corporation to provide a vision for the orderly and efficient development of a 54 hectare parcel in the south end of Clerstom. It's located between the golf course and Highway 2, and your town boundary with the MD on the south end. The lands are legally described as the southeast quarter of section 231227, west of the Fourth Meridian. The ASP is the first step in the development process to outline the desired uses for the lands and outline the methods for which access and services will be provided to the development area. If the ASP receives all three readings and comes into force, the developer may apply to subdivide the lands and develop in accordance with the adopted ASP, the land use bylaw, and all other relevant plans and studies. The plan does propose a potential road closure on Range Road 271. However, in working with the developer, they were able to come up with some other traffic calming solutions or mitigation methods that would allow this road to remain open. The traffic impact assessment is still under review by Alberta Transportation and Economic Corridor, so we are looking for comments from them before we provide second or third reading to this bylaw, just to ensure that we all are on the same page with what has been proposed. Additionally, before all three readings of the bylaw are granted, there are some steps that need to be taken. First, the proposed bylaw must be advertised to the public, your municipal neighbor, the MD of Willow Creek, and Alberta Transportation. Although the TIA has gone to Alberta Transportation, the full ASP has not, so that will need to be circulated once we have first reading. It is important that we do not take this step lightly, and we provide adequate time for our neighbors' transportation and your residents to respond to the circulation. As Range Road 271 does access the MD of Willow Creek as well, this could be a topic of concern for the MD, so we want to make sure they feel they've had the adequate time to address that. As well, they are welcome to speak to the planners, and they'll bring forward comments to the public hearing when that does occur. Following the public hearing, we can have second and third reading. There are a few amendments that we recommend occur before we get to that stage. There are a couple of grammatical and typographical errors, including a reference to Township Road 123, which needs to be updated. That should be Range Road 271 throughout all of the documents, the ASP and its supporting studies. And then we ask that the TIA be clarified that although the road closure is one option, the other options are also potentially possible. We just want to ensure that in the future, this document is future-proofed, and it's, the road closure is not forced later on if it's really not necessary. So, we want to make sure we have a tight document that what our intentions are today are followed in the future. So, with that, you have a chance to hear from everyone else, and we can move forward with that advertisement and a public hearing in sometime next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, concerns? Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to give bylaw number 1781, the Evolution Area Structure Plan Bylaw, first reading.
All in favor? Delegation response, coordinated response to Elder Abuse Committee. Abe?
Thanks, Katie. So, with the last council meeting, there was a delegation from the coordinated response to elder abuse. They noted some of the work that's been done through a grant, a half-time grant-funded position with the elderly in the community over the last couple of years. This position has worked closely with FCSS to oversee a variety of services geared towards seniors. They were successful with the grant for, as I said, for two years. That grant funding will expire in October, I believe, of this year, and so, the request from the delegation was that council consider carrying on the funding for that position once the grant funding expires. So, there is a bit of background here on FCSS council and staffing. In the past, there used to be a part-time position to assist with some of the FCSS work, but that was eliminated back in 2021, when FCSS moved into the town office and essentially got a lot of the reception type and clerical work done through town staff. And so, FCSS has since moved to the west of the building, and so, they have two full-time staff currently overseeing the FCS services in town. Administratively, we would recommend that the matter gets referred to the Audit and Finance Committee for discussions for budgeting, for potentially budgeting this year. The request did come for the last couple of months, funding for the last couple of months this year, but also beyond that time as well.
Can I have a motion, please? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to refer the matter regarding a position with FCSS to work with seniors to the Audit and Finance Committee for the 2025 budget discussions.
All in favor? Approved. Correspondents. The Honorable Rick McGyver, Minister of Municipalities. Abe?
So, this is correspondence from the provincial government, from Municipal Affairs, just confirming the local government fiscal framework allocations for 2024. The operating allocation, 72,800, and the capital allocation of 672,909, as expected. Additionally, there's funding, they, because of the manner in which they forecast the funding now, they can predict what the funding will be a year ahead of time. And so, they have indicated that funding will go up in 2025 to 752,000. That is for capital funding.
Thank you. Take it for information. Next, correspondence. Government of Alberta Immigration and Multiculturalism. Alberta Newcomer Recognition Awards now open. Abe?
So, the ministry or the branch of government, immigration multiculturalism, is accepting nominations for outstanding newcomers. It looks like they're open until June 20, '24. To be eligible, the person must have been a, the nominee must have been born outside of Canada, but are now a Canadian citizen or permanent resident, currently residing
If you think of someone, contact Karine. Okay. Correspondents. Tyler Gandom, President of Alberta Municipalities, Albert Meany's Award. Abe?
Yes, I think it's award season here. So, yearly, every year, the Municipal Affairs partners with Alberta Municipalities, and they accept nominations for municipal awards of excellence. So, they could be for elected officials who have been in office for at least, it says, looks like it's at least three years. Distinct, pardon me, distinguished service award recognizes elected officials who have served for 20 years or more, dedicated CIO rewards, and a dedicated senior team award.
Thank you. Take it for information. Correspondents. Town of Fort McLeod, invitation to the 150th anniversary celebration. Abe?
Yeah, a special invitation here for council to be at the hospitality suite in the opening ceremonies for Fort McLeod's 150th anniversary celebration. That will happen, that hospitality suite happens on Friday, June 28, at 5 o'clock in Fort McLeod.
If you want to attend, contact Karine. Okay. Correspondents. Clerstom District Fair Days Bench Show, application for donation.
So, Bench Show is requesting donation from council to help assist with their bench show, which runs in tandem with Fair Days, August 8 to 10. They are looking for a contribution for the rental costs of the large and the small halls. In the past, council has assisted the bench show with this, with this request, and did so last year. Bit of information on the nature of the show and what all goes into it, and I think there's some information here about 1,000 different projects will be featured, at least a couple hundred residents usually sign on to feature some of their flowers, gardens, heritage displays, sketches, handicrafts, et cetera.
Questions, concerns? Do you wish a decision today? Abe?
I think that's usually traditionally how it goes.
Does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion. We donate the rental fees, or waive the rental fees, or however you want to word it.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to support the Clerstom District Fair Days Bench Show with a donation of $700 towards the rental of the Clerstom Community Center.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, municipal reserve removal. Abe?
Yeah, so, council did just hold a public hearing about this municipal reserve removal. No comments from the public. Katie, did you want to, did you have anything to add to this agenda item?
No, I don't think I have anything new to add. I would just, I guess, say the comments or lack thereof are telling that perhaps this small designation is okay to be removed, and it seems like the public is agreeable. As I mentioned, the sign was there in the park, so this is perhaps one of the more obvious situations in planning for the public to realize that something's going on than in any other method where typically you are relying on the newspaper. So, I would say there was adequate ability to comment, and the lack of comment would, in my view, support removing the designation.
I'll make the motion.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister that the designated officer notify the registrar that the provisions of Part 17, Division 9 of the Municipal Government Act have been complied with, and request the registrar to remove the reserve designation from approximately 0.07, 007, plus or minus hectares of the southerly portion of lot R2, block 2, plan 741, 0893, to enable a subdivision for the purpose of accommodating a land sale.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision. Tax water, tax waiver for Clerstom Curling Club. Abe?
So, we've got a request from the Curling Club to waive the municipal portion of the taxes at the Curling Club. They do make this request. We see these requests come through every year. We've got another one coming up. The amount of the request in 2024 is for $1,171.49.
Questions, concerns?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to cancel the municipal portion of the 2024 property taxes levied on the property located at 430, 53rd Avenue East, in the amount of $1,171.49.
All in favor? Request for decision, tax waiver, Clerstom Golf Club. Abe?
Yeah, so, similar to the last request, the golf course asks for forgiveness of the municipal portion of their taxes each year as well. And traditionally, council has granted that forgiveness in recognition of larger contributions to the community. The amount of the request for 2024 is $3,615.58.
Questions, concerns?
My question is, how much do they make? Do they make any profit from the golf course that they can't pay a little bit of their taxes? Or is this just some... taxes or is this just something that we do all, every year?
Yeah, we've always done it. We own it.
Okay. We own it.
Yeah, we own the golf course.
Okay.
Grab a motion. Councillor Kittles? Question?
Moved by councillor Kittles to cancel the municipal portion of the 2024 property taxes levied on the golf course, rule number one one six three zero 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 in the amount of three thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-eight cents.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, Canada Day Beer Gardens. Abe?
Yeah, so the town is working with the Clerstham District Chamber of Commerce to establish a beer gardens at Centennial Park this Canada Day and between the hours of ten thirty A M. and three P M. And as per town policy, we do require a special motion from council to facilitate that.
Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Cutler? Question?
Moved by councillor Cutler to approve the responsible sale and consumption of liquor at Centennial Park Saturday, July first, 2024, between ten thirty A M. and three P M. On the condition that an application to the Alberta Liquor and Gaming Commission has been approved and is displayed at the event.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, arena, ring, arena rink divider. Abe?
Yeah, so we have some rink dividers currently that are used by the under nine and under seven minor hockey teams. Those were purchased back in 2018 when it was mandated that minor hockey at those age groups had to play on modified ice surfaces, more ice surfaces. Those dividers have kind of ran their, ran their useful life. Additionally, they're only sixteen inches high and so not the best dividers for if you're having a couple of games on the ice, splitting the ice in half and having a couple of games on the ice, easy for things and materials to get puck, for example, to get knocked over from one side to the other. So administration has been working with minor hockey and they have to, to purchase new dividers that are essentially the same height as the boards, would create a better playing surface when there's multiple games happening. The total cost of that is ten thousand, sorry, nine thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars. And minor hockey has fundraised eighty percent of the costs for that. And so the town would like to, administration is proposing that the town covers the remaining twenty percent or two thousand and fifty-one dollars and that that money comes from the arena reserve account.
Questions, concerns? Councillor Kittles?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this was before, a year ago or maybe two years ago, and I think we kind of asked minor hockey to go back and maybe, you know, check with their, their user groups to, to help with that process a little bit more than they had. And I, I see they're up to, well, it's essentially eighty percent. So I think they've done a fine job and, and I certainly could support us doing the last twenty percent kind of thing. So I'm, I'm happy to make that motion.
Councillor Kittles?
Moved by councillor Kittles to approve the out of budget expenditure of two thousand fifty-one cents, fifty-one dollars ninety-seven cents for the rink board dividers, a twenty percent contribution to the overall cost with proceeds to come from the town's arena reserves.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, water treatment supply capital project. Abe?
Yeah, so we have some updates on some capital projects for the town, specifically as they relate to water. Council has approved in the budget, three, three water related projects that we'll talk about here, which number one is a plant pneumatic G three upgrade. Necessitating this work was the fact that our old pneumatic solenoids were obsolete and they were going to be increasingly difficult to service and they weren't making, making products for them anymore. They weren't supported. So we were successful in a grant, a provincial water management grant, and that covered fifty-one point two nine percent of the cost for the project. So the estimated costs in the capital budget was one hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. The highway pump station generator, that is up over forty years old now and that generator is nearing the end of its useful life and was council approved replacing that through the capital budget this year. The backup generator obviously is an important part of the town's water infrastructure as it's a failsafe for when the utilities go down at the highway pump station. Provides backup power. The approved budget for that was two hundred and four thousand three hundred dollars. And lastly, council did approve a SCADA, water utility SCADA, computer replacement and radio upgrades. And that's the existing radio system that we have uses obsolete systems and protocols and they are becoming difficult to service and repair and just causing instances of communication failure, communication failures and alarms. So the project would update, replace the existing computer hardware for the, the remote monitoring system and makes us less susceptible to cyber attacks as well. So going back to the water treatment plant pneumatic G three upgrade, sorry, the approved capital budget for that was a hundred and two thousand six hundred. So if we go back to the G three pneumatics upgrade, we did run into some problems, quite a bit more work to actually have that installed than we were anticipating. It was supposed to be a, a couple of day project. It ended up being a couple of weeks. Despite that, it, that did cause it to run over budget, not terribly, but it was over budget. And so the total project came in at one hundred and forty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, which is eighty-four hundred and fifty dollars over budget. So that's above and beyond. That work has actually been completed. We didn't get that bill until the work was done. The highway pump station generator, when we got quotes, it was to replace like generator, which is an old water cooled heat exchanger unit, not a very common application for, for generator, for the cooling portion of it rather. So when our engineer went out to source the new generator, it was determined that it was, a water cooled generator of the size was unusual and would need to be custom built, which would add to lead time for the project and also would make it more difficult to, whenever we needed to get repairs. It's a specialized, a specialized piece of equipment. And so the engineers are recommending that we switch to an air cooled generator as opposed to the water cooling heat exchanger. This has resulted in more work being required to the building ventilation in the H VAC system, which adds around thirty thousand dollars to the project. So the updated estimate to the project is two hundred and fifty thousand with, with a little bit of contingency in there as well. So council, we are essentially looking for three motions to approve these out of budget capital expenditures. I'll just run through the difference of costs here. The 2024 approved budget for the pneumatic upgrade was a hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred. Additional funding needed is eighty-four hundred and fifty dollars, bringing the total to one hundred and forty thousand one hundred and fifty. The generator upgrade was approved in the budget for two hundred and four thousand three hundred. Additional funding we are anticipating needed is forty-five thousand seven hundred, bringing the total up to two hundred and fifty thousand. And the SCADA computer and radios project in the budget, approved budget was a hundred and two thousand six hundred. Additional funding needed is seven thousand six hundred. I think I forgot to mention that we missed a radio in those upgrades. That's why, that's where that cost is coming from. There's an additional radio that needs to be upgraded that we hadn't accounted for.
Concerns?
It's got to be done. I'll make the first motion.
Additional funding to come out of the water utility reserves.
Moved by councillor Meister to approve an additional eight thousand four hundred fifty dollars funding from the water sewer capital reserve to cover the over budgeted costs associated with completing the water treatment plant pneumatics G three upgrade.
All in favor? Approved.
Before the next one, I just want to ask the life expectancy or what it costs to run from switching from liquid cool to air cooled, because you've got to upgrade and do a bunch of other stuff. Is it cheaper upfront and it'll be cheaper in the long run or are we just saving money upfront and we'll have to pay more in the back?
Sorry, could you repeat that, councillor Zimmer?
I just want to see what the benefit is, is moving to an air cooled generator as opposed to liquid.
Right.
Like, I know we're saving a little bit of money upfront.
The recommendation came down to, again, lead time, sourcing it out, it'd be a custom, the exchanging like for like would have been a custom build. So that was one issue. The other issue, maintenance in the long run, they expect it to be much worse because it is, it would be a specialized, specialized unit. And so they have recommended that, yes, in the long run, your costs are, your maintenance costs are going to add up significantly.
Yeah, being a backup gen set, air cooled, it's going to sit there for most of its life. So having that air, that liquid cool, when it goes down, it goes down hard versus, versus air, so. Hydronic suck.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated budget for that.
Question?
Moved by councillor Zimmer to approve the updated budget of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the highway pump station generator upgrade slash replacement capital project with the additional forty-five thousand seven hundred dollars over the approved 2024 capital budget being funded for the water slash sewer capital reserve.
All in favor? Next motion?
Make a motion.
Councillor Ross? Question?
Moved by councillor Ross to approve the updated budget of a hundred and ten thousand two hundred dollars for the water utility SCADA computer and radios upgrade capital project with the additional seven thousand six hundred dollars over the approved 2024 capital budget being funded from the water slash sewer capital reserve.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, Pine Place Development.
So another 2024 capital project, council, in the budget, you have approved some servicing upgrades at Pine Place Development, Fifty-Fifth Avenue upgrade at the second east, Second Street East from Tamrac to Fifty-Fifth Ave Road. The project has gone up to tender and the tender closed on June fourth. And so W S P is the engineering, the engineering company that oversaw the R F P process. The town received two, two proposals for the work to be done there and one for one point four two six million and one for one point three five, three million. The proposals were reviewed by the engineers for the project and they are recommending that the contract be awarded to McNally Contractors as they had the lowest bid and they are familiar, working with McNally. They have done some work in town in the last couple of years. West Rose Ave Rehabilitation Project, Highway Two Sanitary Repair, Amundson Park Pathways and the Westland Storm Trunk, which is an ongoing project at the moment. The, the, I guess, the engineers' fees of sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and twelve, the brings the total, and an eight percent contingency brings the total project cost up to one point four nine four million, which is within the pre-approved capital budget of one point five five four million. A little bit of information on the project, council, pavement and curb and gutter upgrades to Second Street and Fifty-Five Avenue East, sanitary sewer main extension on Fifty-Five Avenue East and the development and servicing of eight residential lots at the Pine Place, called the subdivision. This project accomplishes three major tasks. It allows the development of Pine Place lots, adding much needed service residential lots in town. It also finishes the road surfaces around Tamrac subdivision. The residents in this area have had to deal with gravel roads around their properties since construction was completed around twenty years ago. And lastly, this project will allow development in the recently sold commercial lot directly north of Tamrac Road. Funding for the project, various funding sources, C C V F, federal, that's a federal funding source, two hundred thousand M S I, that should say L G F F, actually, and water and utility reserves.
Motion? I'm just happy to see that we're actually getting that done after this many years. So yeah, I'll make that motion without a debentary to boot.
Councillor Car, question?
Moved by councillor Carlson to award the Pine Place Development slash Fifty-Fifth Avenue upgrade to McNally Contractors, Twenty-Eleven, Twenty-Eleven Limited, in the amount of one million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and nineteen cents.
All in favor? Request for decision, coffee with council. Abe?
Yeah, so council just, we're anticipating, I think the last coffee with council is next week. So council's been holding these since March, bimonthly coffees with council. I'll let you speak to, I'll let council speak to how well they've gone or haven't gone. I think they've gone well, but I'll let you, I'll let you decide that. But just wondering, looking for direction on setting up a schedule moving forward. The conversation was to set dates until June and then hit a pause and potentially, I think the thought was at the time, to reconvene meetings in September. However, really, it's really up to council on how they'd like to proceed with the coffees with council and, and so we'll.
Comments? Councillor Meister?
I have to say that I have enjoyed the coffee with council and I've been told by people that have attended that they enjoy them as well. It gets them close to us and conversations that they probably wouldn't have on a normal basis with people who might know a little bit of what it's talking about. They get to bring their concerns to the table. I've enjoyed them and I think we should continue in September with them. I've enjoyed them and I think we should continue in September with them. Maybe I'll be the only one.
I concur.
Counselor Cutler?
I concur.
I concur.
Well.
I enjoy them.
Yeah, I agree. It's been good actually to hear the people come in and voice their opinion or share or learn something from them.
I think we've learned stuff as well, so yeah, that's good.
And we did, did have the, the group of people concerned with crime this, that came in today without it being on, on the agenda. So next week would be a wonderful time to sit down and be able to face to face on that as well, right? So.
What, what day is that, Abe? Tuesday, June 18th. At 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
Coffee with council.
There's a invite from the mayor.
Okay, financial report.
Oh. Need a motion?
Sorry.
Motion.
We want some direction on that? Like, do you want to wait till September? Do you want to still have it twice a month, once a month?
How's everybody's summer look?
Yeah, see, I.
I know, you're busy.
My only concern, I mean, we can make them happen, but my only concern is I would rather be on the progressive side, not have them over the summer than have to cancel them. Because if it's a stated thing that we're here, then it, and I mean, if only one of us could show up, I don't feel comfortable as one representative to represent the group. I, I just find it harder in the summertime and I'd hate to have to cancel them and try and cancel them in the summertime. So I, I am full in force of starting them back up in September.
Yeah, good for September.
The days that we're holding them now, does that work for everybody except for?
I think so.
Should we move the one on Tuesday to Wednesday?
No, I mean, you know, the commitment is, is like Counselor Cutler says, I mean, as long as we can have a couple, three representatives. I mean, I, I think that's fine. I mean, we all have some, a few competing things and, you know, some of my councils, some of my committees fall on one of those days, but that's fine. I think, I think that's a pretty good balance.
We don't all have to be here. So take the summer off, start back up in September.
That's just my recog, that's my opinion. I just, I'd hate to have to try and cancel them if we didn't have enough representation.
Well, and I think you'll find that the public isn't as engaged during the summer as well because there, there's lots to do during the summer. So I think that's a wise idea, Counselor Cutler. I concur.
Can I have a motion?
A motion to.
Start back up in September.
Yes.
Take the summer off. Counselor Cutler?
And then, well, you guys made the motion the last time, sorry. I shouldn't really be speaking, but anyways, logistically, when you made the motion the last time in February, we had a set timeframe. So we started, what, in March and we said we would revisit in June. So I'm just kind of like, do you want to just do this in perpetuity until the next election? Like, or do you want to?
Yep. I do.
I do.
I'm fine with that.
So, but then you're going to think the next thing, same thing next summer, right?
Yes.
So till June? And then maybe you'll have some in September and then the election will be October 2025.
Yep.
Well, we should probably, I'm, I'm. Wondering if, you know, we should probably review it next September just because it will be moving into election season and we don't want it to be, become something that we don't intend it to be.
So in the motion, I thought June 2025.
Yeah.
You'll have a pause over the summer.
Yeah.
And then you might want to leave it for the next council to deal with after the election in October.
Yeah.
That's exactly where I was thinking, Chris. That's what I.
She's a miner.
No, I'm not. I'm just.
No, it makes sense. No, until June.
Okay.
Yep.
2025.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to continue the coffee with council initiative in September 2024 on the first Saturday of each month at 2:00 PM at the town office and the third Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM at the town office until June of 2025.
All in favor? Approved. Financial report.
Abe? The income statements, year to date, May 31st, 2024. There are some footnotes in there. You'll notice at some of the numbers that seem kind of out of, out of whack for this time of year. For example, net municipal taxes is at 134%, but that's because we haven't paid yet our Porcupine Hills Lodge requisition. When we do that, it'll balance back out and come around closer to that 100%, so.
Question? Concerns?
I'll make a motion to approve the consolidated income statement for May 31st of 2024.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to accept the consolidated statement of operations for the month ended May 31st, 2024 as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Information brief. Strategic plan update. Abe?
Yeah, so this is council's strategic plan for the term with an update on some of the, on the priorities of council. Some information here on the Community Center Association. Obviously, we know they're successful with the second CFAP grant. That project is, we're currently working with the Community Center Association to prepare that tender package, anticipating sending that out sometime over the summer and the project happening in 2025. Just timing for the Community Center Association was, was best to, to actually have it at that time, so. Good information update on Phase 2 Stormwater. We are waiting on Alberta Transportation. We're doing that road crossing across 520, which heads north for that, that stormwater line. And so we're waiting on Alberta Transport. And then the northern trunk of that line, which would complete all of Phase 2, is scheduled to continue at that same time.
Is that to go across by the fire hall?
Yes, north of the fire hall, yep. That removes, if you recall, that's going to remove that bottleneck that capture, capture the stormwater on the west side of the fire hall and alleviate the bottleneck that happens at the fire, kind of at the fire hall. Was there anything else in here, council, that you wanted to discuss or had questions about or concerns about?
Thank you all for your hard work.
No other questions, concerns? Take that for information. Information brief, council committees report. Thank you, Counselor Meister.
Thank you, Counselor Meister.
Thank you, me.
Anything anybody want to add? Moving on, information brief, council resolution status. Don't think anything's changed here, Abe?
Yeah, I know. Any questions on anything? Got a few in progress there.
Have you heard anything about, has anybody stepped up for the Terry Fox run yet?
I haven't.
Still in.
I haven't heard, but I can, I'll, I can inquire.
That'd be a good bit. That'd be a good bit.
Motion to adopt the information items.
I'll make a motion to adopt the information items as presented.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to go in camera.
Motion to go in camera.
Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to go in camera at 8:00 PM for the following items. A, advice from officials for Section 24. B, advice from officials for Section 24.
All in favor? Approved. Camera off, please. Can I have a motion to come out of in camera?
I'll make the motion to come out of in camera.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to come out in camera at 8:34 PM.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, we need a motion to approve economic development, developers of Alberta Professional Development for the CAO.
I thought I pushed it, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the economic developers of Alberta Professional Development Training for the CAO.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to approve the economic developers of Alberta Professional Development Training for the CAO in 2024 in the following areas. Establishing the foundation, business retention and expansion and business investment and attraction.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to adjourn? Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson that the meeting adjourned at 8:35 PM.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you. Camera off?